Motion to approve agenda.
Motion to approve agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Public comments?
Thanks for having me here tonight, you guys. I know the SOLA project has been drug out far longer than all of us would have liked, and we are at the finish line, I can tell you. We have a party that wants to come in and take the tax credits, and they've requested a few amendments to the BPA, which is what you have in front of you here tonight. And as long as you're okay with those, we can actually get the system fully commissioned next week. I know you brought up a couple issues that you had, and those would be addressed as well. Yeah, I guess that's where we're at, is just third party would like these changes, and as long as they're okay with those, we can get it turned on and go on next week.
Thanks. Before we go any further, Tyler, can you give the council an idea as to how you intend to cure the defaults that were set out? Those defaults being the failure to certify the system, and the second one being the production at lower than the expected or the estimated production levels?
Sure, sure. So I guess for the first point, that would come next week as well, as part of just the official commissioning on our side. As far as the production, we actually had a few guys out there this week, and some mice had gotten inside of the inverters and chewed some of the wires up. We've since capped those off, actually filled the condo with some foam, keep that from happening in the future, but that's been rectified at this point as well.
Thank you.
Anybody got any other questions, or about all you got, Tyler?
Yep, that's all I had.
Motion to go into closed session pursuant to Iowa Code 21.51(c) to discuss strategy of counseling matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent or its disposal would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the government body in that litigation.
Go move.
Second.
Healy, a call roll number.
Earl?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.[142.12]
You got that shut off?
Yes.
Consider approval of amendment and East Stopple agreement with Midwest Energy Finance LLC.
Chris, you got that turned on now?
Yep.
So you want to make a suggestion?
So Mr. Mayor, in order to act appropriately, what you need to do is have a motion made. And then you can have discussion, but the motion should include an authorization to approve the proposed amendment, subject to clarification of the type of insurance coverage which is available to the city, subject to clarification of the issues regarding the requested amendment with respect to ad valorem personal and real property taxes, and then also an authorization to execute the Stopple agreement, subject to clarification of the fact that there is in fact an existing default notice outstanding. And while proposals to address the defaults have been provided to the city, that until time has passed to allow determination, that the city cannot certify that there are no defaults or potential claims, because if there were any subsequent defaults of the same nature, the city would assert them from the date of the original default notice, not a new default notice. So a resolution of that type will be sufficient to give the appropriate authority and to provide the appropriate public information and knowledge of what you have done.
So I need a motion to approve the amendment by clarifying the insurance, clarifying the taxes, authorizing, clarifying the East Stopple existing default by proposal that's been advised to us from legal counsel.
That would be some...
I need something there.
Someone.
Scott?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
We have the sale today that was conducted by Northland Securities on our behalf. Heidi Kuhl is here to review the relatively good news regarding the sale of a bond. Heidi?
Hi, Heidi Kuhl of Northland Securities. Normally, the city has worked, if you've been here for a little while, with Michael Hart. He had a baby just earlier this week, so I'm here to fill in for him and to tell you a little bit about the sale today. Senior Patates, in front of you, we have a bond sale summary, so that's what I'll go through with the debate. So in this part of the process today, Northland Securities went out to the market with the 10-year term, and it was one of these history projects that's come up. So this is the 10-year term with level debt service payments. These will be backed by the debt service payment that the property taxes. So we sent a finance plan about two weeks ago that Gary went over with you, and that's when you approved your official statements, our preliminary official statements, and looked at a finance plan. Today, when we went to the market, your insurance interest cost was 2.94%. That was based off of a non-rated bond in the market, and it was, when we went into the market, it was less than what we had looked at when we saw it, and it's right about where we wanted to be. We had contacted banks in the local area and banks all over Iowa, as well as large institutions. So that's one of the things is when you do a negotiated sale, you reach a lot of investors to get a good rate. You didn't have a few Iowa banks jump in, one in Charles City, that jumped in, and I definitely think that that helped lower some of the rates on that longer end. So Northland was very happy, and the city should be very happy. The city chose to go non-rated, even though the previous issue had an A-minus rating. The reason that we went up that is that the market can see that you had that previous rating, and there's also costs and time associated with that. And I think we saw in the market today that if the city would have gone through that process, you would have, you know, just felt the same. And there's, you know, because you have to take into account those additional costs. So... And then if you see in the front row, you can show that the number is now of 1,915,000. Why is that different from, you know, the number that you saw before? When you go out to the market, there's car bonds, there's premium bonds, and there's discount bonds. If you look at page two in exhibit B of the finance plan, you'll see a coupon and a yield column. That coupon is basically showing that those are premium bonds that we sold today because your yield is low. What does that mean? It means that the investors wanted to pay more money upfront for that higher coupon, but when you go back to pay that back, that maturity back, you don't have, you'll be paying a smaller principal amount back. So what is the city actually paying for is that yield column? So you see that 2.05 and 2.2, and then all the way down to 2.85. So that's essentially, the yield is essentially the interest rate that the city received. There's also a call date. So anytime, 2027, those can be called or renewed, and if at that time, interest rates are lower, you could go in and refinance those. There is the call protection prior to that, so those rates will stay in place. That's a pretty typical call in the marketplace. Very good from that standpoint. So if you see down in this bid information, where you see 1,915,000, that extra premium that I talked about before is where you're receiving that additional premium upfront for a gross amount of 2,41,000. Then you have your cost additions, underwriters' discount, for, you know, your net amount is at $2 million. Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
I'll just make one comment, and exhibit C talks about the debt service schedule. It shows that the P and I for fiscal year 2020 is $237,457.08. We had estimated in the budget a cost of $240,000, so we will actually lower the amount by three, less than $3,000, what we've actually got in tax, because we have to tax for what that amount says. So the estimate is potentially a little bit higher than what we, what we got for the sale, just for that purpose, and of course, as you know, you can adjust down or just up.
So in a nutshell, it came out pretty good for the city.
Yes, yes. Right where the market is, and with that local interest receipt, especially in that long end, if we saw a little bit lower rates in the lower end than what we were seeing in the markets, that was very good.
What's the underwriters' discount?
Underwriters' discount is a fee for the underwriter, so to pay to find the buyers in the market. So it's not, you know, me walking away with that. What that, what that dollar amount does is it entices somebody to pick up the phone and call across the United States, across the state, say, we have these bonds, Oluwala, Iowa, they'll tell the story, they're looking at that official statement, and they're telling the story of the bond to sell it.
So since the sale went good and fast, we got a discount?
So that's actually, that's the, that's the fee.
That's the fee?
Yes.
The 28,000 is the fee?
Yes, that's the fee.
This is our first time, so we might ask a discount.
You know what, ask, ask, get any questions, that's what I'm here to do.
Well, I don't know if it's a question, but a never in parentheses to be is usually a less...
Yes, it does look a little confusing, that's, you know, the way the program does it.
It's minus of what you're getting.
So up on the top, it makes a little bit more sense from a, you know, print, it's not price. So tonight, what we have is we have a contract that would basically, what it does is it locks in the rates that you have in front of you. And then, should the city approve that, then you would go ahead and, first thing tomorrow, we would send it out and show the world, basically, that, that these are the rates that, that our regulations require us to have, to show the entire market where you were, and, you know, basically, those, that protects you and the market to know that you got a rate that makes sense, so.
Can I have those contracts right here, or the signature right here for you and I to sign and give to her before she leaves?
Okay. Okay. So I guess, does anybody got any more questions on this?
Heidi, we still have one more action in place to receive the money?
Sure, sure.
She ain't telling me if she does.
So, hold on, let me pull that calendar out. I had that calendar, I believe. So you have another action in place. And then, which is, basically, it'll, bond counsel will then come in and want to know the legality of, so basically, you'll legal, you'll go ahead and say, "Yes, this, we're finalizing the official statement. We're realizing that this contract is a legal contract." You know, go ahead and do that.
I had a phone call today from Steve Nadell, who's our bond counsel for me, Harrison Truni, and he says that there are now two more disclosure requirements that are just coming online from the Securities and Exchange Commission and the IRS. Those disclosure requirements do affect us, and that we are going to have to be more formal in our understanding and use of monies from various funds. In other words, if we take even indirectly money from the utility that goes to a general fund, as an example, we have to do that formally by resolution. Herefore, that was not a requirement. And the work that we have done, getting our transfers squared away and getting our accounts squared away, actually melts really well to what this new requirement was coming out from the SEC and the IRS. It may very well require us to set up separate bank accounts for the utilities and for the general fund, which herefore we have not done. Talked with Brenda a little bit about that today. We're going to talk more about this with Steve Nadell in the upcoming weeks. He's going to be sending out to us more detail about those reporting and requirements. But it may very well require us to continue the progress, probably a little bit more rapid pace, of how we manage our cash, and that we're going to have to be a lot more discerning as to what money is in a particular location versus what we've done in the past, where we kind of put it all in the thick of the pot of soup and draw it out. For me, that's, it's a good thing, because it really gives us a much better understanding about our positions as far as the utilities and general. But that will be something that we'll have to work on, and we have to comply with that 10 days after we receive the money. So we'll have probably about four to five to six weeks to take care of that. I assume that's the end of March is when we receive the money.
Right. So the issuance resolution will be on your March, March 7. And then the closing, the proceeds will come in on March 28. So the city is currently under a continuing disclosure agreement with Northland Securities, which means, so when you sign up for a bond and with your previous bond, what, what that means is that each year, you're required to do certain disclosures to the market showing your financial condition. So a lot of the stuff that's in the official statement, we have been providing those.
You do that for us?
Yes. The thing that's changed in this is that any time that the city would make any sort of financial obligation, which hasn't, we suggest that if you have any sort of financial obligation, whether it be a lease, a tip agreement, even, as Gary said, you know, transferring the funds, to contact us, contact your bond attorneys, and we'll determine if that's something that needs to be posted within that 10 days. Northern Securities has a full-time person who is dedicated to exactly this, this task. That is all she does. And so we are dedicated to helping, making sure that these disclosures are, are good and correct.
We, we're going to be faced this year, because we're going out for the SRF loan, we're going to be faced with some limitations this year as far as what is taxable and what is not taxable. It shouldn't have an impact on us, but it may very well have an impact upon the lender. Or SRF is, is, is underwritten by the federal government through the state. So the taxability of this is somewhat negligible. It doesn't have an impact on us. But we are going to have to go through more disclosure, even in the Atley Guard, for this particular year, given the fact that we're going to be doing a big SRF loan. So that's an additional disclosure issue that we have to be mindful of. But again, the things that we have reported to Northland and what we are going to have to report in the near future are going to be far more deliberate than what we've had in the past. Those are the kind of things that we have to report to Northland for them to disseminate out into their world.
We have a motion to accept the resolution. Move to accept the resolution.
Second.
Darren?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Thanks.
I'll look up the business cards of if you have any questions or any concerns or any questions. We'd be happy to take anybody's follow-up any time. Thank you very much, guys, and congratulations. Good day today.
Award Hotel Motel Tax Funds. Everybody had a chance to look at the proposals? So we, we, she don't have two. If I add it right, we got $33,120. We got $8,280 for economic development, $8,280 for tourism, $16,560 for recreation. Does any, I did a little, I read all through the bio girls things, but I'm not, I'm not familiar with the organization. I have talked to a lot of people, nobody knows. I haven't been able to find anybody that knows about the organization. And from what I read, I don't know that it fits under our criteria.
I, I agree with you.
I mean, until we can get some more, I mean, I'm not saying in the future maybe they should reapply, give us a little more information, but I don't have, I don't know anything about. But what I read is, doesn't fit in the criteria. But, of course, that's my opinion.
Did you read the score?
I read it.
At Staffload, we thought that this is a, the bio girls is something probably more appropriately applied to the community foundation than that does.
Yeah. So... We really only have the Ag Society applied for 8,000 under the economic development category. Is everybody okay with that amount?
Yes, under the tourism.
On our form, it's under tourism.
Mine's different.
Oh, okay. You know, mine's different?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's different on mine.
This one's right.
Mine's right.
Oh, yours is right.
Another reason I know that is because I went in with, and Matt was Sandy, and we went over him and discussing, there was a Tuesday. You was...
Yes, I think you were, because you were out of town, yes, you were all at the meeting yesterday, so it would have been Tuesday then.
Historical Society, 10,000 requested under tourism. Davis County Tourism, 4,000. D.C. Trails, 25,000 under recreation, and Isaac Walton League, 10,000 under recreation. So we need recommendations, because we don't have that much money.
Right. So since there is enough in the DCA?
And the, I mean, it's up to you guys. If you want, I mean, if you only want to give them 4,000, you can only give them, I mean, if you want to give them the full, pull them out, you can. If they ask for eight and you want to just do eight, we can carry the 280 over.
Can you move some of the economic development?
There, just no move. The leftover money?
No, I just wondered, you know.
Oh, is there other things that fall under economic development?
No, if you have money left over from economic development, can you put it into the tourism?
No.
Okay.
Do we have what we did last year for these?
I know the Ag Society, we gave them money for a stage, I think it was last year.
I think they got...
Open a stage for 4,000.
4,000, I think, last.
So...
They're putting all new LED lighting in the Shell Pavilion. And they added on to the Shell Pavilion, so they're putting, they're doing work in it, so they're helping with our...
Energy.
Energy savings, I guess.
Ag Society.
And I assume that what we don't disperse all of the money in the account now, we can retain it for another college throughout the year?
Yeah. And if we don't use this year, that carries over next year, and it adds to what we have next year. So then you have, you know, sometimes we've done two years amounts, so...
We have a, we have a balance right now, right now, about $18,000. So what we're talking about here is, is we were budgeting 35, I think it was, 30, $35,000. So we actually have that carryover to some degree. We moved a lot of money also out of this account to the D.C. Trails project to help pay down that cost. So realistically, what you have right now is, is an operating balance that can allow for people to make their requests, and we keep collecting money every month. But this is a kind of an invoice-based type thing, you got to spend it to get it. Or at least have the project demonstrated that there.
Well, what do you want, suggestions, recommendations? I recommend 6,000 for Davis County Ag. 4,000 for tourism and historical society each. Five for Isaac Walton's, 10 for D.C. Trails.
I can live with that.
To me, it really doesn't make sense to carry it over.
No, I'm just thinking if there's something comes up later in the year that...
We got 18,000 already, and like he said, we took and transferred 50,000 out and give it to the trails, which that makes 100% of that recreation, which isn't, isn't right.
Well, the 18,000, I would consider is just a cash flow situation, and we need to have cash on hand. I think we always need to carry that amount.
I mean, the reason for this is to get it back out into the...
Didn't we, didn't we have money? I'm going to end up and ask, can, can help me out here. Didn't we put money aside for the ball field? And have we used that?
We're using that now for the basketball.
I mean, with the exception of $2,200 in economic development, that's, I mean, we can go ahead and fill out the change and gather, obviously, the ballpark.
Yeah.
When it gets carried over, it just gets spent willy-nilly for, it doesn't really get spent in the categories that shouldn't be spent.
Well, I think it stays in a hotel motel fund.
I know, but it may not. If we spend all the money this year for recreation and we save tourism and economic development, do you earmark that it goes to tourism and economic development, or do you use it for recreation? So then you're going over 50,000.
Earmark in those categories.
But is that how, that's what I'm saying, if we took and depleted, we had 50-some-thousand in hotel motel, and we took and give trails 40 of it.
But that was 50,000, that was in...
But that 50,000 wasn't all designated for recreation.
Yes, it was.
I guarantee you it wasn't. Because nobody has any idea what percent, nobody has any idea.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm going to take issue with the fact that nobody has any idea. Bet we have an idea.
Yes. Nobody's ever been able to answer that question.
We've received, we've received in the past a lot more money than what was anticipated based on the fact that, and where we're at right now is much less. We were getting 52, $53,000 a year for a couple, three years, and now it's back down to the low mid-30s. We're trying to figure that out from the state. Right now, we do not have an answer from the state as to where that extra money has gone to. So at this point in time, we're only working with what we know that we've been getting in recent times. It could be more.
I don't, I don't see a problem keeping some back, but...
We, to give context also, in our agreement with Phase Two of the trails, D.C. Trails was to give us $10,000, and we haven't received that yet. Also understand that the city made a commitment to put an extra $80,000 into that trail project, which is realistically why we have still $40,000 negative balance. So we're, we're hoping that by the end of this fiscal year with unextended funds, that we can take out the rest of that. And quite frankly, if we need to do that, now that we have these more, more of these reporting requirements that we talked about at the debt service, we can no longer carry these negative balances.
Do you want to make that a motion, what you said? I'll make a motion. You want me to list the numbers?
6,000 to the Ag Society.
Yeah, Ag Society. 4,000 for historical society, 4,000 for tourism, 10,000 for trails, and 5,000 on the...
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye, opposed.
Consider approval to be your AgBride pass-through town for the 2019 event. We got a letter that, we got to have an answer back to them by the 28th of February as to whether or not we want to be a pass-through town. whether or not we want to be a pass-through town, so that they can get the route decided.
July, possibly July. It'd be coming through here probably on the 25th. And the reason why I know that is I got a visit from the hotel manager, owner of Cobblestone today, that he said all hotels around here, Centerville, don't want, they're getting booked up. That his is all booked up for the 25th. Just because people in the area, whether it's going to come through Bloomfield or not, it's a different story, but it's going to, the segment that could affect us goes from Centerville, where there's a layover site, to Fairfield, which is the next layover site. We were looking at it online today, and Brenda said this is the shortest rag bribe, or almost the shortest rag bribe in history, in that it's the easiest one, it's so flat. I guess around here is the hillest part, maybe, who knows?
I see no reason not to.
I have a feeling that because Centerville's so relatively close, if we are a pass-through city, people are just going to be rolling through, because Centerville's not that far away. Early on in the trip, they might stop here, but Centerville here is not as much as Center, or from here to Fairfield. And who knows how they're going to go.
I didn't talk to Zach Dunn lady about the route. Still come in on Highway 2, come down Jefferson, and then back off of Block Square, and then come back, and then go out.
Take 40.
And so we will ask construction of Jefferson and possible Park View when we start, you know, the summer for the CDP grant. So we'll be looking at that during that time period, make sure we can, the route can care for that.
Didn't see any issues over.
That should be good.
We got a motion to approve it or not approve?
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Consider appointment of co-chairs for the 2019 Rag Bribe event.
I'd like to.
Point Brian Burnham and Wayne Van Burnham are going as the co-chairs. I talked to them, and they're, what are you going to do it?
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Approved claims as presented.
New proof claims as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. We need to move the motion. Adjourn.
Be in Jersey.
Yeah, because we got to start another.
I'll second his motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Since we're right, thanks. Want to call to order the 6:30 meeting? Motion to welcome everybody that's here and for coming. Motion to approve agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chris, I'll turn it over to you for interaction.
Okay. Let me go get the team.
Okay.
We'll get them.
So we'll use, who is this over?
Are you, are you going to say your?
What do you want us to do?
I want you to step out here, and we'll let these guys present.
Do you want this to be back?
Yeah, that's.
And block it to do that?
No.
No.
We're going to make this move.
Just get it out of the way.
Here, here on the lot.
Wheels aren't fine.
He can, he can stay set.
I did, I did.
We just do that.
Yeah, I'll stay there.
I thought you needed a record.